We'll call our study session to order tonight, and welcome everyone. Thank you for being here. And we have two items on the agenda tonight. The first is our Pinal Partnership, and introducing the not really new CEO, and the new director for Pinal Partnership. Any intro? Larry, you need any intro here? Tony, it's all you.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. Councilmember, it's a pleasure to be with you today. It is a good day to be in Pinal County, especially in Casa Grande.
Especially in Casa Grande.
Especially in Casa Grande. One thing I want to do is just thank you for your support, and especially your participation in various ways in which you've supported Pinal Partnership over the years. It was originally created back in 2005, and it's done quite marvelously under a lot of good leadership. In March, I had given up in December my public service, four years as the mayor of the city of Maricopa, and then eight years as a county supervisor. And those were wonderful times, but you get to the point when's enough enough, and I answered that question. But in March, this position came available, and I've always admired this organization, and I couldn't say no. And Harold Christ, who you all know, or many of you know, he is putting his attention back to the Windmill Winery, but he is on, as a past president, on the executive committee. And then after Melissa Johnson, who had done a great job for five years, she found employment within her career path, and she wanted to make that move, and I think that was an excellent thing. But boy, does it put you in a panic trying to find someone who can fulfill that type of role of an executive director, and then do the many, many things that is required of that position. Fortunately, we found a Pinal County resident, and even better yet, a Casa Grande resident in Reedareen. And so she's been with us since about mid-June or so, and we've had a great start. We have a lot of things that we have been doing, and I'll just get along with the slide presentation here. We are a 501(c)(6), so that's a nonprofit organization, and we have a board of directors that is the overseeing body. And then we have an executive board, and then we have two employees, myself and the executive director in Rena. Mayor McFarland, I thank you for serving on the board of directors and the work that you do in support of the partnership. And I think many of others, in one way or the other, have either attended our breakfast, participated in our committees. And we are over 200 members strong, and we hope to be able to continue growing that. I mean, we're living in Pinal County. We're going to be growing, so we should be growing our organization too. One of the things that really is somewhat the strength of Pinal Partnership is our committees. And granted, a number of our committees lost a little bit of the steam during the COVID days, but some of them stayed active all during that time period, government relations, water resources. Those did an excellent job as far as staying focused and doing the work. They, like the water resources, were still engaged in a three-year study, the basin study. That, Mayor McFarland, you have participated, and probably others. Water resource, as important as it is, required to get all the data gathered, and now we're in the point of trying to find those solutions. Economic development, we're going to be getting that one going. But the government relations, all during the legislative session, they kept themselves busy trying to find the bills that were beneficial to Pinal County and the ones that were not so beneficial, and being able to discuss those. Government relations will have perhaps a big task as we go forward with redistricting and looking at that important topic, so I'm sure that'll be front and center with that organization. When I was a board of supervisor, we relied on the open space and trails committee to do a lot of the background and create, and help us create the master plan for Pinal County in regards to open space and trails. And because of the work they did, we were able to start with a director-level job with Kent Taylor, and then help it grow from there. One of the signature events that Pinal Partnership does is, of course, the breakfast. We've had a number of various topics, of course, the very popular city manager updates, and then board of supervisor updates, and then the fabulously successful Elliot Pollack's market forecast is probably the most attended event, and we're looking forward to having him back in November, December time period. But we also have been known to take on very difficult topics, such as Johnson Utilities' situation in Santan Valley. We're not afraid of taking on some of those. But we also focus a lot on economic development and transportation. When the regional transportation authority was first being discussed, that was one of the transportation committee did that and looked at that very hard. And Pinal Partnership was on a lead role as far as the marketing and trying to make that successful, get the information to the voters so they could make their determination. We've done a number of projects and will continue to do, but as I mentioned, the regional transportation plan, of course, the basin study. Superstition vistas is starting to crank up, and it's a huge development up there near the AJ area. They're going to be a very, very serious planner in our growth in that part of the county. Councilmember?
Do they have water?
Well, that's a great question.
Because that's one of the things that they couldn't do anything about is there isn't a drop of water that falls on the ground in the area they are at.
Correct. Yes. That organization is looking at that, and I think the Apache Junction, along with Queen Creek and others in that area, will have to solve that. That's a very, very serious problem, as you know, councilmember. We support the Pinal County Town Hall. And then when it comes to specific things that help our member communities, such as Casa Grande, if it's like supporting one of your intersections on I-10, the mayor asked me to, as the president of Pinal Partnership, sign a letter of support. And as you know, in a lot of these projects, they require a broad amount of support regarding these projects, and I was happy to do it, and this is some, just some of the work that Pinal Partnership steps up and does. When it comes to future opportunities, we've been known to have that wonderful static map. It's a big map that shows the county and some of the important roads and railroads and economic development, Lucids on there, Nicola, of course, in order to find those for people who are not very familiar with Pinal County. But it is not as easy to communicate, and I think that in this 21st century, we can do better. And the vision for that is to be able to have layers that represent transportation, maybe utilities, economic development, even hospitals and other institutions, be able to layer those onto a map, use our friends at the county. They're interested in cooperating with Pinal Partnership on this type of project, along with some of our utilities who have the GIS-type capabilities in order to make layers that you could turn on and turn off, and be able to have that, that you can communicate with economic development folks on site selectors, that these are the various assets that we have. And so you're not always just looking at a static map, but you're able to get the things that those folks are interested in down to their iPad or down to their smartphone. That's the vision, and it's a long-term project, but we have some great partners. I think we can make that happen. One of the things I've done ever since my days in Motorola and with the city of Maricopa, and then with Pinal County, was kind of be the front person for creating strategic plans and helping to get the vision for each one of those organizations down so that you can have a roadmap that not only council or the supervisors are working with, but staff is working in a team with you on that type of plan. We want to do the same thing for the partnership and being able to take them in a roadmap that we all agree with. This is a changing county. It's changing communities, and we need to stay up with what the needs and the vision of our membership are. We recently completed a membership survey. If you participated, thank you very much for doing that. And we're analyzing those results, and I think at the September board of directors meeting, we'll be able to have those together, but we want to always improve. And so we sent out a membership survey, and we'll be analyzing that, getting those results very soon. And then, of course, if there's special projects and something that Casa Grande would like to have Pinal Partnership, which has the overall county view regarding a project, we're always there to either work those through their committees, give you a spotlight for the breakfast, or those type of situations. So with that, I think that's the conclusion of my presentation, and I thank you very much for allowing me this time and so many familiar faces. If you allow the opportunity for questions or comments, I'll be happy to do it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you for really all the work that Pinal Partnership does, all the committee work. There's, I mean, that EMS basin study is part of the water committee. They've been working now for almost three years.
Yes, three years.
So, you know, it's a lot of work by a lot of people, so thank you for everything you guys do. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Smith? Yes, Mr. Powell.
Yes, I just, I wanted to get with you the, I don't know, are you familiar with the water harvesting of the Mississippi River that's been presented?
I'm aware of the theory around that, yes. Been able to bring a...
Well, I've tried to call Jordan and some others to sit down with them and explain to them what's going on, and got no, I don't think she wanted to talk about it. But that went through the House Concurrent Memorial 2004 floodwater harvesting was approved by the Senate 23 to 7, and the House 53 to 4. And if we're going to do something for Pinal County, we need to get the water.
Yes, we need new sources of water.
And we need somebody like Pinal Partners to hooray this and get people notified on what's going on and what it would involve. The, just real quickly, I'll try, I could be like David and go for a long time, but...
Don't do that.
Okay, I won't do that. But the, what we're looking at is we don't have water, as we know. And there's a guy named Herb Gunther, I don't know if you remember him, but he was head of the water department of water resources. And he made a statement in, I've been to several of his law classes, and there's a couple more coming up here pretty soon. But he said without a new source of water, safe yield will never work, which it wouldn't. I mean, if you take a bucket out of the ground and pour it back in, and you don't have a new source of water, it doesn't work. And he said if we continue to hit the aquifer, we'll have the Gobi Desert. And so what, the plan that was brought up on this water harvesting was Mississippi River has done $19 billion worth of damage in 2019 on the river. And again, this last year in Davenport, Iowa, was hit, I think, $50 million or something like that on their part. But what we're looking at is harvesting that water, and it helps two different areas. It helps them and helps us, because that water that comes down, they can't stop it. It's just, there's too much water when they get that snow melt. And it would be taken out at Davenport, which is going to have a lot of good, clean water, because it is snow melt when it gets to that point. But put in a diversion dam there, and then I-80, I don't know if you've ever been down I-80. It's kind of a boring highway, but it's very level. It, you can take from New York to San Francisco on I-80, but I-80 on this one from Davenport would goes directly to Rock Springs, Wyoming. And so what we've said is we would like the diversion dam to pull out water, and we would pipe it in a federal corridor. We don't have to condemn anybody's property or anything else. It's put in that federal corridor and send it on down to that, and then God dug the rest of it and just let it flow like it was. But if we don't do something with water, I mean, there's going to be some big cuts coming. There's some people that are going to be very disappointed, and it affects development in agriculture equally, pretty much. Right now, there's a lot of people that have to set aside their dream plans. But I'd like to get with you or somebody in Pinal, because I think that's kind of the thing you could really help do is kind of make people aware of this and get the word out. I know the, down in Tucson, they're aware of it. They had it, the guy in the Phoenix paper and different places have noted it. But it, all seven states would benefit if we could get this put together. And the Mississippi River would not have the kind of horrendous flooding that it has if you could take, divert enough floodwater out each time, where they would still have some flooding, but not like, not like $19 billion worth. And it takes out towns and fields and everything else on its way down. So as I say, I was disappointed because I tried to get ahold of Jordan to sit down and explain to her what was going on here, but she wouldn't be the one anymore then that would need to be contacted. It would be you or...
Mayor McFarland, Councilmember Powell, I think it's very timely what you're suggesting, because yes, you can certainly communicate to me, but on August 20th, I got the date right, correct? August 20th, we're going to have our breakfast focused on that particular, the water resource and the, some of the negative press that is out there regarding that Pinal is out of water and those type of things. They're not true. We're not out of water. But for new, for its continued development, there's going to be, need to be new sources of water. I think it's would be ideal to tee that question or that item up for that breakfast to be able to ask the panel of experts, and then we go from there. You know, you get it out in the public arena, then maybe the water resource committee can take a look at it. But we can look at it several ways, but I'd be happy to meet with you after, you know, in the coming weeks.
The state legislature is really backing it. And Rusty said they want to do something about the water. They don't want to be sitting here without any water, and several of the others have. And so as I say, it's one of those things, the sooner you get started on it, the better. And I would appreciate that, but it's going down to a feasibility study in Washington, DC right now. It's been sent, and it's also been sent by the natural resource conservation districts of Arizona. I presented to those up in Flagstaff, and they bought in all the way around. So there's a lot of people that know you need a new source of water. You know, we don't have enough. They've got too much, and it would be a benefit both ways if we could get this going. And if you're a Democrat, which I'm not, but it would be a wonderful time to step up, because your president got rid of all of the guys that were doing the pipeline and have them do the water pipeline, and that's environmentally friendly. There's nothing, water, if it gets out, is going to be water. But as I say, there's a lot that could be done that way, so.
Mayor McFarland, Councilmember Powell, you and I see things very simply, and simple solutions and practical ways of solving problems. I'd love to be able to get with you in the next couple of weeks.
Tony, maybe we can get offline, and if you would reach out to Mr. Powell, that'd be great. He can kind of share with you his vision on that. And it's actually already been passed by the legislature, so it's obviously, it's very public information as it is. And obviously, we need to look for new renewable water sources, so that obviously is one of them.
Yes.
Desalinization is another one. So there's a whole, we could talk another hour and a half on just this one subject, so. Ms. Powell, thank you. Did you have anything else you wanted to ask him?
Well, just one more comment. D-SAL, which has been talked about, is...
It's expensive.
Well, it's very problematic, because in California, they're taking the salt out of the water and going out in the ocean a ways and dumping it, because it'll kill the marine life. And it would be, what they're doing is wanting to build two of them right at the Gulf of Mexico there, and then have that belong to them and take their water out of the river. But if the river has no water in it, we've built them a real nice, and we haven't done anything to help us. And that's one of the issues, and you can't make water run back uphill with it. So those are things that need to be considered.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions for Pinal Partnership?
No, I just have a comment. I have really enjoyed going to the breakfast, and I have learned a lot over the past four years. So I just want you to keep doing what you're doing, and as, you know, I know that you've done a lot for the Casa Grande area, and we're happy to have you on board, and can't wait to see what comes over the next year. So thank you, Tony.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, Rena and Tony, thank you both for being here tonight. Thank you to the Pinal Partnership, and we appreciate the partnership, so thank you.
You're welcome. We'll be talking more. Thank you. Bye.
All right, I think next item on the agenda is a discussion with the city manager about our American Rescue Plan. Mr. Rains?
I turned it off. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the purpose of the study session this evening on the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 is to familiarize the group with what I consider to be the foundation and some of the structure of the ARPA funds, and as well as to provide a bit of an overview to the mayor and council on the money that has been distributed from the city of Casa Grande during the COVID pandemic, and ultimately look for some level of guidance from the mayor and council on the use of the funds through the ARPA of 2021. There will not be action item taken this evening, but primarily just an overview and feedback. And so just a bit about the plan. I think a number of you have probably read over the course of the last several months a bit of the foundation and the structure of the act. And quite frankly, there still seems to be some level of guidance that continues to come out. We've tried to wait to a point where we better understood all of the requirements, both for the drawing down of the funds as well as for the annual accounting that will be necessary. And I'll talk a little bit about that this evening. Just to update the mayor and council and our citizenry, the mayor and council did pass a resolution allowing the staff to make a request for this year's allocation. That has been done, and the city has received one-half of the $11.4 million to date. So we are in possession of the funds at this point. There was $1.9 trillion allocated in this act, of which $350 billion was actually allocated to states and local government. And the city of Casa Grande actually received $11.4 million that will be allocated over the next two years or in two tranches, so half this year and half next fiscal year. Essentially, the guidance on the use continues to be delineated to the various organizations, but ultimately, I think that you'll find that it's becoming a bit clearer today. So there are a variety of requirements on the eligibility of the expenditures. And what you will find is that cost incurred between March 3rd, 2021, which is when the act was passed, through December 31st, 2024, is when costs can actually be incurred for the use of these funds. But all funds must be expended by December 31st, 2026. And so we are not under any obligation to expend the funds that we receive in any given year. We've got a little bit of a runway that we can actually expend the funds. There were some requirements related to pensions, and I know there were a lot of questions that were being asked about whether or not these funds could be utilized by local pensions. And there has been some specific information that these funds cannot be spent on pension deposits. And I know the mayor and council will be considering a bit of a recommendation from the staff later today about pensions. And I know some of you have asked, but contributions into pensions are not allowed. And the money, the money cannot be spent, funds can, for the funds to be, to reduce taxes or delay tax increases. That's been another commonly discussed piece of dialogue that has transpired the last several months about whether or not these could be, these funds could be used in lieu of a proposed tax increase, and that is not the case. And funds may not be used as a non-federal match for other federal programs. So essentially, these funds are to be allocated for projects that are not funded by other federal types of dollars. There are four, what I consider to be four main categories that these funds could actually be utilized for, and each of these categories has what I consider to be a number of elements that actually apply. But the four primary criteria is that it has to be COVID-19-related or a negative impact, economic impact on the community, and I'll go into a little more depth of this. It can be used for premium pay for eligible workers, and I know that there's been a handful of articles that have run throughout the state where local municipalities have been utilizing this to fund either bonuses or some type of additional pay for the essential workers. It can also be used for government services to the extent of the loss of revenue during the pandemic, and it can be utilized towards investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Again, I'll talk a little more about all of those components here in a second. So let's start with the COVID-19 or negative economic impact. And so ultimately, the very first element is containing or mitigating COVID-19, which, again, the allowable expenses would be for items such as vaccine programs, medical expenses, enhanced public health data systems and the like. So essentially, any costs that are being expended as a result of battling the pandemic could be an eligible expense. Behavioral health, healthcare needs, pretty self-explanatory there, but ultimately, mental and health substance abuse, crisis intervention and hotlines, service to promote access to social services would be an eligible funding allocation. Payroll, benefits for public health, safety, human service employees. Again, pretty self-explanatory that if you've designated these into these particular positions as essential, the money could be utilized to cover the costs associated with the payroll and the benefits. Impacted industries such as the tourism, the travel and hospitality fields, the money could actually be allocated to improve physical barriers or partitions signage to facilitate social distancing, the provisions of masks, so on and so forth. Rebuilding public sector capacity to pre-pandemic levels, again, to cover the costs of rehiring public sector staff, as well as replenishing various payroll and benefits. And there is one item that obviously I had left off, which probably prompted some of the calls that I had received today related to investing in socioeconomic disparities, such as utilities, housing, and just ultimately nonprofit, for nonprofit organizations, as well as addressing disparities in education. And you'll see that there's been at least... that there's been at least a few projects that have been suggested that would fall into this particular category.
Larry, I believe those have to be in low to medium.
Income.
Census.
Right.
Blocks, correct?
Correct. That is correct. As I mentioned, the secondary, the second element is premium pay, which allows employees of the jurisdiction designated by executive as essential workers. And it can be used to provide direct payments to private entities through grants for individuals in the public health and safety staff and essential workers. We talked a little bit about the element of the loss of revenue. I will tell you that this gives a bit of the criteria related to qualifying for this particular element. It would apply to any loss of taxes, fees, or other revenues to support public services, components, units of an enterprise fund. I will tell you that we did do the analysis on this because we felt that perhaps the, those services that we actually would have been collecting revenues from, that we shut down during the pandemic, such as our rec center, could potentially qualify for this. However, the equation, the formula that is utilized requires that you actually be in operations for a period of three years. So that would exempt the rec center from being eligible for this particular. So that is one of the reasons we did not list that as one of the options for mayor and council to consider this evening. And then lastly, and I think this will likely be the category that a number of the cities will really focus on, is the investment in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. And ultimately, the projects have to align with the Environmental Protection Agency's Clean Water Revolving Fund and the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. As far as the broadband, it has to build broadband infrastructure with modern technologies in mind, specifically projects that the delivery service is offering 100 megabytes per second download and 100 megabytes per second upload. Again, you'll see that this particular category of broadband, one of the reasons why staff has not listed that as a potential project is simply because of two reasons. Number one, we've got a number of broadband companies that are moving into our community, as the mayor and council is aware of. We've recently entered into various agreements for broadband, number one. And number two, there are very sizable amounts of funding that is being allocated through the federal government that is outside of these, this particular act that is going to focus on broadband. We are staying very in tune with some of that, some of the provisions of those various funding sources. Many of those do, will support the private industries in developing broadband, but ultimately, they're, at least at this point, and obviously, this is pending mayor and council's discussion this evening and adoption of a final plan, do not, we do not recommend any broadband projects this evening either. There are some audit and reporting requirements, and I specifically list this primarily driven for the fact to, so that the mayor and council fully understand the amount of accounting and oversight that's going to be necessary. But secondarily, if there is a desire to actually utilize the monies, the funds outside of our organization, there will be some requirements for any organization receiving these. And these include the Single Audit Act applicability. And I know the mayor and council is familiar with that. We're required, under the Yellow Book, the guidance standards of audit, governmental standards of auditing, to actually have a Single Audit Act done. It's established, it really focuses on federal dollars that are being distributed. And as the mayor and council is aware, we typically reach the threshold that requires us to go through. And a Single Audit Act, you see that opinion that is rendered by our outside auditing firm. Based on the thresholds that we see in these particular figures, it will likely be the source, the funding source that will be audited for the next couple of years. And so we will be taking extra precaution as we follow these Yellow Book standards, as well as the audit periods and reporting to ensure that we're meeting all of the obligations. And again, I somewhat mentioned this, but the audit relationship between direct recipients and nonprofits as well, we'll have to meet those standards through the reporting requirements. If I can, just spend just a brief moment, because I think it's really twofold, an opportunity to give a mayor and council a bit of an overview. And I know that we've been doing this periodically. And it also will provide some details to our various citizenry. The mayor and council did allocate funding from our CG Cares program, which was a direct allocation from the state that actually covered costs associated with public safety, police and fire, and communication, payroll, and benefit expenses. That money was actually converted into a plan known as the Casa Grande Cares Program. In this particular case, I am just going to outline the monies that have been allocated by this council and expended into the community. But the business and nonprofit assistance, we had, the mayor and council had approved $535,350. And in fact, we, at the final accounting, found that we had expended $557,883. So there is a transfer that we'll be recommending in a future resolution from some of the other sources that I refer here, refer to here this evening. But ultimately, there was $35,000 that was given directly to the Chamber of Commerce for the marketing and business retention efforts. And we anticipate some level of an update by the chamber here in the next couple of months on that program. And then $500,000 that was allocated directly into our nonprofits and our business community. And I know the mayor and council is familiar with that. There was a set of guidelines that was established for that. That was by application process. Obviously, I would encourage us to continue to utilize that if we elect to allocate more funds into the community. We also had a residential assistance program that had $464,000 that was approved. To date, we've allocated $216,903. I'm going to just quickly cover what is remaining in the various categories of that. The residential assistance was a little bit more broad, if you will, than the business and nonprofit. It covered more elements. For example, we had rent, mortgage, and utility assistance. We still have $85,000 that's remaining in that particular fund. We've been working very closely with three nonprofit entities to distribute that money. We also had money that was allocated to direct food bank support. We still have $15,000 that's remaining in that particular category. And we had money that was allocated into the childcare program, and that was a very broad category. We have $37,900 that's remaining in that category. Internet access, we've got, we had roughly $200,000 and we've allocated right at $91,000. So we've got $109,197 remaining. And then finally, the mayor and council is aware of the third grade reading program, where we had allocated $14,000 and that money has been expended. So there's nothing remaining in that. I think the important point that I want to make to the council this evening is you're considering the allocation of these funds. We are still allocating funds through our CG Care Program into the community for residential assistance and likely will continue to do so throughout this fiscal year. We, the mayor and council is aware of the fact that we also set aside roughly $1 million in enhanced response and stabilization plan into the general fund. And from that $1 million, we essentially allocated $15,104 to restore the partnerships funding. You did that in June. And so there's still a sizable amount of funding that's remaining in the stabilization fund that can be utilized as well. In addition to the money that was allocated to the CG, through the CG Cares Program, mayor and council also allocated money that came directly from Community Development Block Grants, the CBG Cares Program. We allocated funds to food insecurities.
And Larry, this was additional dollars received through CBDG, right?
That is correct, Mayor.
Not our normal allocation.
It is not. It's in addition to what we programmed through our normal allocation. So we had food insecurities to a variety of nonprofits in the amount of $94,837 that was allocated. And I guess I should point out that all of these have been allocated but the reporting has not been required yet. And so there's still some level of drawdown in reporting. And once that is finalized, we'll be able to give the mayor and council a more thorough overview on how much was expended. But we had a couple of nonprofits that dealt with providing food to the community for roughly $95,000. We also allocated additional monies to our senior mills program in the amount of $51,300. We also worked with some of our nonprofits in addition to the CG Cares to fund rental and utility assistance in the amount of $51,300. We hired a case manager for the rental and utility assistance with one nonprofit as well in the amount of $49,000. And we assisted nonprofits with the short-term rental and transitional housing funds that could be distributed into our community in the amount of $43,200. Ultimately, I'm just trying to set the tone that there's been a good amount of money that's been allocated into our community during this, during this past year, both through funds that the city made available, as well as through funds that were eligible from outside sources that we were the fiscal agent for. We have received a variety of input on the use of this Rescue Act funds. And I've listed just a few of these items for the mayor and council this evening. We've received requests for supporting cultural events by nonprofits and small businesses, really just, again, trying to rebuild the capacity that once was there prior to the pandemic. We've received feedback to support a cultural center, a request by CG Alliance. We've received similar activities as funded through the CG Cares Program. So we can, there's been individuals that have indicated that perhaps we ought to put more money into utilities and rental assistance. We've also, staff has actually had discussions about developing a program to assist residents with past due sewer and trash billings. One of the things that we discovered during this past year is that as we were allocating funds to the various nonprofits to assist individuals, residents in our community, is that the majority of that money, if not all of it, went to those private utility companies that have a metered service, because that's who would actually shut off their service if they did not pay. And so there was, none of the money was utilized to pay for sewer and trash billings, as an example. And so this could be a program, if the mayor and council elected to go down this path, that we could essentially utilize funds to essentially pay for those particular services specifically. Develop a program to assist nonprofits with lease payments for facilities. The mayor and council is aware that we do have nonprofits that are leasing our facilities that have been impacted by the COVID pandemic. Just again, another recommendation that has been made. And then lastly, use for qualifiable sewer-related capital improvement projects. And there's a reason for that last particular item. And it really ties to the growth that we've been experiencing in Casa Grande. And the mayor and council will be hearing a, at a future council or study session, excuse me, a future study session, staff is preparing an overview, a presentation on the impact of the growth, that the growth is having on our, particularly our sewer infrastructure, with the amount of new houses that are coming onboard, along with the amount of industrial development that is transpiring, the capacity that we once enjoyed at our wastewater treatment plant and within the main lines that transmits the effluent is reaching what I consider to be a stage that we're going to have to take some immediate actions. And so, and again, that will, the council will have a better context of that when staff completes their, completes the research and information on that particular topic. And we'll be presenting that at a future meeting. But there were three particular projects that were approved by the mayor and council during the capital improvement program during our fiscal year 22 budget that do qualify under sewer projects, sewer qualifiable projects. We've got a Florence Boulevard Relief Sewer Main that in fact extends the capacity in the transmission line on Florence Boulevard for the growth that's happening closer to Interstate 10. Construction of a recharge facility, which ultimately is the facility that we've had permitted and planned around the Dave White Park. What that particular project does is it allows us to recharge our effluent and actually earn a long-term storage credit. While we specifically focused on that, I can tell you that we've, in the most recent week, we've learned about a couple of other projects that may become invaluable to us as we're trying to deal with some of our effluent issues. But ultimately, this is a project that would qualify. Water reclamation, facility expansion, which again, it's something that we need to begin to focus on, expanding our wastewater treatment plant. I recognize that from an intake, from an intake perspective, we're about 50% capacity at the 12 million MGDs that we've got available to us at the city. But there is some work that needs to be done to begin planning for the next expansion. And it was a project that was approved that would be qualifiable under these particular funds. And as I indicated, any programs that council would like to incorporate based on the recommendations, as well as I suggest that what you'll, you find here this evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, is really a one-year allocation. That was our desire is to ultimately align our projects with the amount of money that we receive for fiscal year 2022. We do envision that there might be some water-related projects that we would have on the horizon for next fiscal year that would qualify as well. But until we have more detail and information on what those projects might look like and the cost estimates for that, I did not want to make a list that was, that was greater than the amount was allocated this year for two reasons. Number one, I want to be more specific on those costs. And number two, there has already been some discussions about the potential of the second year allocation being somewhat clawed back by the federal government. And so I don't want to ask for your approval in a plan this fiscal year that may not be funded for next fiscal year. So with that, I will, I will pause for questions and look for any feedback that you might have. Our strategy from the staff's perspective is to take the information and the feedback that we received this evening from the mayor and council and formulate a more organized plan, much like we did with the CG Cares Program for the mayor and council to take action on, to really govern how these monies are utilized. So with that, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'll pause.
Larry, just one point on that last slide. It's ARPA.
Yeah, I saw that.
A-R-A. So it's the American.
Rescue.
Rescue Plan Act.
Right.
Sorry. Yeah.
That's what I had on my mind, Mr. Powell.
There you go. The first slide was right.
That's right.
I just want to, just my two cents. I think that infrastructure and water and sewer are critical at this point in time in our community life, especially with the growth that we're experiencing and some of the issues that we're starting to see with regard to our collection system. We have half of a wastewater treatment plant that we can't get all the wastewater to. So there's some issues there that we need to really consider. And this might, this is an opportunity, I think, for us to do that. I think we have other monies still in the other cares side. There's still monies available there to do some other things, some other community things. And from an auditing and from a restricted money standpoint, this money is more restricted than that other money. So it might behoove us, and again, this is just my opinion, and I'll obviously throw this open to the rest of you, but that we look at concentrating this money into infrastructure areas and then use the other monies that we still have available to potentially look at some partnership programs and some other things that maybe we might want to do. So that's, again, just my two cents. Does anybody else have, yeah, Lisa?
And I agree. I mean, obviously, infrastructure is very important, especially for the business, the health of the community. But what I do like about the requests that are submitted is there is a broad range of not only the supportive business and infrastructure CIP projects, but also the health of the community. And I think, you know, we don't forget, we all know how much COVID has affected our community and the community health. People are suffering. There's a lot going on with the family unit, you know, children, schools, working parents. So I do like that there's a variety of requests that you have here. Of course, it's still important to support businesses, some of the financial, you know, strains on families. But, of course, I want to learn more about the cultural center. When I read through some of the information I got, what I liked about it is it's a collaboration between a lot of agencies, the community, and it focuses on the health of our families, our children, and. And I just think that we need to invest in that, too. So, but I, I understand your point on the, on the infrastructure, too. But I'm just hoping we can find a way to kind of put that into there, there, too.
Donna?
I have a couple of questions for clarification and then a couple of comments. So Larry, you had mentioned that the rec center didn't qualify because of the three-year issue. Does that also relate to other community services like Lynn Colas Center and those things, they wouldn't qualify under, under that?
The Lynn Colas Center is operated through grants as an example, or through taxpayer dollars, so there's not a revenue stream that actually comes into that. So we did not think that particular project would qualify, no.
Okay, all right. And then, you know, I know that Lisa and I both participated in the cares funding, and we sat Monday after Monday and looked at the applications, and we, I know that the staff worked so hard, and Stephen, you know, worked really hard to make sure that we got the information out there. And I think that, you know, like Lisa said, we have sort of a really broad scope of requests. But I guess my other question is, how do we make it fair so that other agencies, other nonprofits, all have the same fairness and opportunity to apply for this, this money? Because we need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence to open that up, you know, for all people. So I guess that's one of my, not concerns, but my, I want to make sure, because the last time when we did this, there were comments made about only so many people from so many agencies got the money, and it's hard for us to get the word out. But I think that we have to do our due diligence to give everybody the opportunity for that. And if they don't apply, they don't apply, that we have to, we have to worry about that. And, you know, I know you said about $550,000, and, and there were times that we're like, why, you know, why are these people not applying for it? And we felt that, you know, we had guidelines, and I feel that we have to have guidelines on this. We have to make sure that whatever we do, the categories that we have, that everybody gets that opportunity. And then the last thing I will say is, you know, you had mentioned about the audit, and this is a lot of money, $11.4 million is a lot of money, but it takes something, you know, to really, to look at this money and say, who's going to manage this, especially if it's for outside agencies? And so I, I want us to be cautious about that. Our staff is already, you know, overworked on the general things. And so if we have auditing purposes that need to take place and staffing that have to do, we have to look at that as a business for us as well.
And that's exactly why I suggested there's still $250,000 in the cares side that isn't regulated, that can be more easily distributed versus this $11.4. It's going to be very regulated.
Right. And then the last thing I will say, and then I'm done, is that for any new programs or projects, are, are we looking at how are they going to sustain that after the funding happens? So I think there's a lot of, a lot of questions that we need to answer.
Right, I agree. Matt?
Donna took my last one about sustaining projects, thank you.
You're welcome.
But that's why I like the big infrastructure projects, because this is one-time money, one-time expense. We've lived by that rule for a lot of time in our city. And so, and those are investments in our future as well, so it's going to help everybody. But I also want to say, with the cares, I think we did a great job with it. But I don't want to forget about small businesses, because it's not going to get any easier just hearing the news recently. So I want to make sure that we don't lose focus, because I know these new funds are a lot more restrictive. I did have a question about nonprofits, because I heard the other day that we couldn't give to nonprofits, but we can give these to nonprofits then?
Yes.
Okay. And, and can you do partnerships?
It depends on what the project is, isn't it, Larry?
That's right.
It's not, it's not a carton lock, we can give it to a nonprofit.
We can give it to nonprofits for qualified projects.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, you know, it's more narrow, but I think it's really going to help our city in the long term if we focus on these big capital projects, because that's going to help everybody, but not lose sight of our small businesses and our citizens. One thing I want to ask was about the past due sewer and trash billings. I don't know how specific we're getting tonight, but that would be more towards the hardship side, correct?
That's correct.
It wouldn't be just someone who hasn't paid their bill.
That'd be like paying, that'd be like paying utility bills.
There would be, there would, in my mind, there would be an application process, qualification-based process that would need to transpire.
I just want to clear that, so people don't think we're just going to pay off all these sewer bills and give it to the city, give it back to ourselves. Thank you very much.
Mr. Powell?
What's the cultural center? Is it like a museum, or a historic museum, or what, what happens at the cultural center?
And we have some individuals from the Alliance here tonight that will, that may be able to provide a little more detail, but ultimately, it is a, it, it is a project that is really geared towards educating our, our residents, primarily through some type of after-school type of a program, and/or summer programs that are focused on cultural activities, more than just academic. It really is a combination. It also will focus on, as, as Councilwoman Fitzgibbons pointed out, mental health, just a variety of different nonprofits that come together to provide what I consider to be a one-stop shop for, for our children of the community that, that need a place to, to, to really grow and to, and for assistance. And we, we will have some more detail on that, Mr. Powell, just to give the mayor and council a little bit more insight of that. But, but I really think it's focused on our young adults in the community.
Thank you. Mr. Levander?
Well, and just to follow up with Councilmember Powell, research really tells us when students have their spark, which is their self-interest fulfilled, they're much happier, they're much more productive. So having some variety of programming and opportunities available for students should connect more back into the community, because over the last 18 months, we've seen a lot of students totally disconnect from the education system, from families, and everything else. So this is an effort to bring people back in. I understand the issue about sustainability, but a lot of times with nonprofits, the hardest thing is getting started in that. And so if we have the opportunity to maybe jumpstart a project that we know through research is proven, I think we maybe ought to take that risk as well. But I agree with the mayor that our infrastructure needs are significant as well. So I'd like, you know, I like the mayor's balanced approach to this.
Go ahead, Bob.
Larry, my question is on the money left over from the cares act. I heard $250,000 is left from the money that council has already allocated towards the community programs. And, and ultimately, my, my question is, is there still money within the city that has not been allocated by council that we, we could at some point allocate towards those programs?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, or Mayor Pro Tim Huddleston, the, the short answer to your question is yes. We've got on and above the $250,000 that we've got allocated in the CG cares program in residential assistance. We've got roughly $1 million that have been, that has been allocated in the stabilization fund, which was really just a set aside, if you will, for the mayor and council to actually use to, to continue the financing or funding of these programs. And we've also set aside roughly $3 million into fund balance reserves. Should the pandemic continue to be something that we're dealing with in future years, the mayor and council could essentially allocate that money into a variety of programs or services provided by the city or by the community.
Okay. And, and my two comments are that, number one, thank you to the members of council and the mayor that participated into the cares program distribution. I'm very proud of that, of that list. It went to appropriate services. It's being used, hasn't been used up, but it's being used, and we do have money left over, not just on this chart, but, but we have money that we could allocate back to these, these particular programs.
Yes.
Ultimately, my, my comment and my question is, I think within city services, if, if I had to pick a department or an area that the pandemic has hit the hardest, I would say the fire department. They, they are the ones that were responding to the EMS calls at all hours and, and addressing the illness that's associated with this pandemic. We are, we've already talked about this in, in budget meetings, about the need for additional fire stations. And ultimately, my question is, can this rescue program funding be used to build a fire station instead of tagging that $5 million or $4 million cost onto a bond issue that we go to the taxpayers for?
No. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, Mayor Pro Tim Huddleston, I, I have not seen any type of allowance for public facilities outside of the sewer and water infrastructure. We can certainly take an additional glance at that, but the, what I have seen is that you can actually utilize it to cover payroll and benefits for those individuals. And I suspect that if you wanted to do something similar to what we did with the CG cares program, where you use that money and then transfer your savings into, into actual infrastructure that is outside of what's allowable here, that's something that could potentially be done. But I've not seen anything specific for public facilities.
Okay. And I, I respect that. That would be my preference if it was allowable. If, if it is not, I, I tend to lean towards what the mayor brought up about water and sewer infrastructure.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
We will work on a plan, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Larry. All right, well, it's seven o'clock, so let's take five minutes, and we'll resume city council meeting at 7:05.